First. Alright, so I call to order the Wednesday, April seventh, twenty twenty four work session of the Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag. There you go. And. Thanks. One day. You. Thank you.
That brings us to our first public comment period on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, uh, I'll take a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes of April second, twenty twenty four and March twenty 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 four. If there are no comments or changes.
I have one correction on the March twentieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, third paragraph, I I wrote down three to one as approval. Um, I had, uh, believe you, Mr. Birdman voted nay on the minutes. I did, yeah, and I'm not sure if Mr. Chairman was here yet. I wrote three to one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction as noted by Supervisor Shelley.
Second, movement, second of all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Or she carries. Mister Jones.
Good morning. Uh, just an update on the project. Uh, street light project, everything's been done. I was working on some missed fixtures and some additional fixtures we wanna try and add to the system. Public Works and Community Center projects. C K S has developed the preliminary site plan that, uh, we believe all are comfortable with, at least moving forward as a concept. Um, so the Stephanie and her team are finally finalizing the ARPA grant. Uh, pulling together all the information for submission of that grant application this week. Um, it's approximately two million dollar grant application. That basically encompasses everything from property acquisition, the site engineering, preliminary design of the building. Um, all the permitting, everything basically we need to do. Uh, for the the site work to get us to the point where we can begin constructing of the building itself on the community center front. So that's that's progressing. Um, the cop road pedestrian sidewalk pedestrian access. Uh, this is north of Yoda Road on the Franconia side. Uh, survey of that and those properties is gonna be done this week. Just to to see what our options are as far as providing providing, uh, pedestrian pedestrian facilities to to fill in that missing link there. Um, the Harley Grant round is now open. Or the scoping forums are due by the end of the month. Stephanie and I were talking about, uh, possible projects and, um, what seems to be the kind of the easiest thing to get something pulled together for the the program. And probably the most appropriate project that we have would be the, uh, installation of the new school flashers flashing signals at Indian Valley Middle School. So if the board's okay with that, we'll move forward and submit the scoping forum and then proceed with the application based on Pendant's comments.
Long overdue.
Thank you. Um. Public Works contracts, the base repair and payment markings contracts are on Penn bid. Uh, and due April twenty sixth. Uh, the award will be at your, uh, May meeting. Uh, the garage lease rental, uh, eight oh four Harleysville Pike. Uh, Joe and I met with, uh, our solicitor's office to review the terms of the lease agreement. So we're, uh, waiting for a response and a revised agreement from from the owner. This quote. Hopefully we'll have something in place for occupancy on May first. That's the goal. Department activity, uh, Roth Park improvements continue, bringing topsail works completed, defenses just about completed. Um, working on some parking lot adjustments for some stormwater considerations. So again, it's the the snowball that turns into into the avalanche. Um, but we've got an opportunity to to fix some issues. Uh, so we're gonna take advantage of that. Um, we'll likely resurface the entire lot once we're completed. Um, we took delivery of our new paper last week. So yesterday we had some training and, uh, did some some of the base repairs and some of the the widened areas at at Roth Park. Um, so just trying to get up to speed on the paper itself. And still could use some initial work before we get into doing real finished work. So we thought, uh, good training opportunity would be to pave some of our trails. So we're looking at, uh, the ones at Summerwind are are pretty, um, the the pavement's really raveled. So they're in need and then maybe even out at, uh, at Jacob Rife to finish paving the the stone area there. So we're looking at those opportunities to try to get some more training on the on the machine and also get some projects done. Uh, the trout stocking went well. Uh, last Thursday we did the, uh, the stocking with all the kids, had close to, I think, seventy kids.
I can see.
And and it's also we're getting some gathering from just the, you know, the at large from showing up with their for their children. So it's turning into a a real thing, so it's it's good. Um, looking for ways to maybe expand on it next year, maybe get the fire company involved. And, uh, have some public works equipment there for the kids to like kind of a touch truck kind of a thing, you know, so. Looking for ideas and and things just to improve that, but it's very, uh, uh, yeah, we twelve hundred fish in stock this year. Six six hundred in Roth Park alone. So there is. You guys were telling me I wasn't here last week, but they were telling me there was one gentleman that was there caught over a hundred fish stocked. Just like every five minutes he was just pulling there. Just catching release.
Right, right. Why is the living?
He had a lot of friends.
Excuse me.
Fish or one fish a hundred times, right?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
But apparently they they don't feed the fish for like five days in advance of the stocking, so that they're hungry and ready to bite. Because if they've got a derby or something that's coming on, you're coming up like within, you know, a short time from when they stock. They wanna make sure the fish are active and and biting, so.
Interesting.
Um, on personnel side, uh, Sam Hudson, our our new hire resigned on, uh, April first. Yeah, he's had some personal situations that he was dealing with and also had an opportunity to to move out west. So he's gonna take advantage of that. Um, so we're back to looking for two new employees again, so. We need a place now and get those those spots filled. That's all that I.
Reference experience, or are you looking for someone who's about?
One of each.
Okay, okay.
What are the positions again?
They're basically laborers position.
Maybe.
Do you have any other questions?
I have one. The, uh, detention basin long retention ban, all the for rolling.
Does that project finish?
We're waiting for the the seed and the the plantings.
They're we're mowing over there and the E N F is still in place and it looks like it could go away, so.
We're, we have to get the, uh, Conservation District, uh, approval before we do that, so. We're waiting for maybe another end of the month or beginning of May to get them out there, because I think you need seventy percent coverage.
It looks like it's about ninety percent, but.
You know, it's super low.
Right.
Seventy percent within a hoop.
Yeah, there's, uh, some some of the the areas at the bottom of the basin where it's it it's remaining a little wetter than we anticipated. Um, so if that becomes an issue, then we may engage, uh, uh, the watershed conservancy to try to help out with some some wetlands plantings or something like that to, uh, to try to kind of naturalize the basins a little bit and also to help with with, uh, any remaining. That may be inhibiting the the seed from from taking and from from getting the growth in the bottom of the basins.
Okay, that's all. So I had, anyone else?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Chief Metway.
Yes, sir, uh, just a brief update on our cyber security efforts, uh, last year, Michael. Training they sent out everybody. So, uh, Joe and I had my goal reach out H P T, uh, to, uh, do something on a regular basis. So they have some, uh, programs on the shelf, uh, like ten fifteen minutes that, uh, we're gonna start sending out once per quarter. And, uh, followed up, um, test emails. Uh, and with, uh, there, we actually think that people pay extra attention if we tell them it's coming. Uh, before they click on something, which is exactly what we want them to. There's no, we're not looking for a gotcha. Uh, we're looking for the extra purpose for anything gets cooked. Uh, so that'll be coming out, uh, and if anybody does click, uh, Michael's just gonna have a private, uh, train. Uh, just so.
And if we don't click on.
To know.
Yeah.
Did something, but and there's obviously a damage. So. On one of the test emails.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's both to get a little extra.
So. Very good. Building and zoning.
Thank Prince Chairman. So far this month, we have thirty three building permits that were issued. Um, over in High Point, we're well over halfway into the construction of it over there. So far this year, we, uh, they have eleven that they've started. We have started the the enforcement of the temporary sign amendment to the ordinance. And so we're a couple of weeks in on that, so, um, so we notified the community regarding the enforcement and so we're starting to get the phone calls and clarifications and and that sort of thing, so that's that's looking pretty good. Um, we do not have an upcoming zoning hearing board yet for May. However, we do have a potential, so the the Mary Slumber property on Hoffman Road is under an agreement of sale and they actually submitted a package that was an incomplete package for an eight lot subdivision where that would exceed the maximum requirement, maximum allowable dwellings on that property. And so, um, so.
Wouldn't that be like three lots by resume?
Just, yeah, somewhere around there, yes.
Who? Again, what's the nature of their request?
Well, they're adjacent to, they they claim that the nature of their request is because they're adjacent to the golf course. And there are smaller lots on the golf course, of course, using the golf course standards, but, um, they're looking at the size in the golf course. And then they're also adjacent to those homes on Sharon Lane, which are at the minimum requirement, I believe they're around eighty thousand square feet, so they wanted to do something. So they didn't survey the property or engineer anything, so that that why it wasn't completed and they didn't, um, pay for the application, yeah, so it's incomplete and I have a meeting set up next Friday with their return to discuss the, um, application.
That doesn't sound right.
Sounds like a hardship to me.
So at the at the planning commission, we'll be, but looking at one ninety six Main Street Land Development and the various ordinance amendments that are ongoing. And that is everything I have, great.
Very good. Any questions for Michael?
Curious. When was the last time we had a zoning hearing for? Been a while. It's been a while. Don't lie, I can listen to you since the last one.
So. So the last time we had one was April fourteen, two thousand twenty two. For one seventy six Main Street Grandview House.
Size going. Thanks.
Very good. All right, moving on, Mr. Jake House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item on the manager's report is, uh, our contract traffic engineer Stephanie Butler, she wants to discuss the D C D C F A M T F award that the township received recently for six hundred thousand dollars. This is for the one thirteen relocation and shared use path. And before we get back to, um, the state regarding how we want to proceed, she just wanted to go over the situation and and ensure that you, we were all on board as far as, uh, the direction we wanted to go with. The grant, because we did not receive the whole grant, we received half. The scope would need to change and we need to reach out to them and say we want to move forward, but we're reducing the scope, so anyway. Stephanie?
Good morning. Um, so yes, we we had the announcement, I believe, March twenty sixth with the six hundred thousand dollar award for the multimodal. Um, if you recall, that was for the full project for the one thirteen alternate route and shared use path. Um, and that was for preliminary engineering phase, um, assuming this will go through the federal dollars process and the PennDOT project delivery process. Um, with the six hundred thousand dollar award, which is half of the request. Uh, we've looked at a few different options, um, to make the best use of those awarded funds, you know, at this current time. And so I believe, uh, D C D's analyst reached out, uh, with the two options, which include, number one, funding the remaining balance to complete the original scope of work or reducing the scope of work to match the funds that were awarded. Um, so those are the typically the two options that D C D gives when they make partial awards. Um, and over the last handful of weeks, we've been pretty busy, um, with the various, uh, grant applications. Uh, and I've had a couple of meetings now with the D C D representative, Michael Shore, to review scope of work options and what, you know, he thinks would be the best route forward. I believe the last time I was here, we we talked about the Greenways Trails, um, application, uh, and moving forward with project development for the shared use path portion with the funding from M T F, um, as well as the submitted applications that were made a few weeks ago to both Senator Casey's office and Senator Fetterman's office for the community projects. Um, we're recommending the following scope with the M T F money. Um, so the the senator submissions were for construction for phase one of the shared use path, which Mike, if you have that plan, if you could pop that up on the share screen, that would be great. Um, that is phase one is considered from Schlosser up to Morris Road.
Can you hold on a second, Stephanie?
I sure can.
Was that something you've recently emailed many times?
Um, I sent it probably at like seven fifteen this morning.
Yeah, that would be recent.
That would be recent. It's probably the same plan we looked at last time, but I think I added, um, some more text to it or. So it's it's similar to what you saw the last time. Um, I can continue talking while he's pulling that up. Uh, but phase one is from Schlosser Road up to Morris Road. Um, on the left-hand side of the plan that you're that you're looking at. So with the M T F funds and the six hundred thousand dollar budget, assuming federal dollars, like, so we're gonna make some assumptions with the senators, some, um, packages, because those are federal dollars, those have to follow the PennDOT delivery, much like the rest of this project when it's a hundred percent. Um, we're recommending doing the engineering with some traffic evaluation for the needs of the one thirteen roadway realignment, um, under the six hundred thousand dollars. So that would be for both preliminary and final design for the shared use path portion up to Morris Road, including that segment. It would also include the environmental studies that are needed for the entire route, phase one and phase two, because that's one document. We gotta look at the whole, the whole project. And then it would also include, uh, it leaves a fair amount, um, of dollars to do some of the traffic evaluation, really to satisfy or to review the warrants and the needs. Um, obviously for this relocated roadway or alternate route. So as you recall, there's been a lot of questions as to if with the signal that's in place now, what does this need to look like? It's been, you know, traffic patterns maybe have changed a little bit. What are we talking about? What are we looking at for intersection controls? So we we really think that would position the phase one path to get through final design so that it would be ready if indeed, uh, funding is secured for that construction through the community project applications. Uh, but it would also address the traffic, um, portion where we're looking at what does this need to look like today versus, you know, twenty years ago or thirty years ago. Um, and and addressing the needs analysis and the warrants and making sure that what ultimately could be implemented is what is needed out there. Um, so so that's what we're proposing as a revised scope, uh, with the six hundred thousand dollar award. Um, that being said, the Greenways Trails application that we're doing would then shift to phase two of the trail for project development. So that application, um, which we talked about the last time being for phase one, could move up to phase two so that the full trail could ultimately be implemented, um, as a project. So let's say the Greenways Trails receives funding for project development. Um, then that portion could also be designed and then potentially, um, the full, that full section of trail would be the would be able to be constructed first while the roadway work is continuing to evolve. So that being said, I believe before any contract agreements, um, are sent out from D C D, which would go to both Joe and Keith. Um, they will have to review the revised scope and budget to make sure that it falls within, um, obviously the project, which essentially it's all within, you know, this reduced scope is within the original scope of the project, um. So I don't foresee any, uh, issues on their end at that point, especially since we've been talking with Michael Shore and going through the process and making sure that we're setting it up, um, in a way that, uh, meets all of the requirements. Um, so I think, um, that's essentially it in a nutshell. Uh, what what I would need to do is just to make sure that that scope of work is what, um, you know, the township is interested in pursuing with the funds that they were awarded. Um, in lieu of matching, you know, there the the balance that wasn't awarded and and moving forward with the entire scope of work. Or if there is some other scenario that somebody has in mind, I'd be happy to talk that through as well.
Girls Committee, you guys can.
Yeah, I think we need to advance the project to the extent we're able. We've got money to do something, but the question is, is this the something we want to advance? I think it's a good use of the line, it's appropriate and full top.
Mike, could you zoom in a little bit on the far right end of, well, please? I can't agree with Keith. I'd want to see this, look at this a little more, you know, not too long, obviously, but I think, uh, I think a big part, as I mentioned before, is especially pedestrian crossing, if we could get anything like that at Landis. As that, as we discussed, that there's a need in that area, but that seems like a good opportunity or even something that we could do, whether we could account that in there too, to take advantage of that, obviously, cut corner, you know, the ones that cut corners, but we're reducing the price, but that would be something I'd like to see applied somehow.
Yes, um, you know, certainly we can, we can look at how that will work, that tie-in at Landis Road, um, as well as one thirteen. Like I think I've mentioned previously, that's a little up in the air. We need to, we need to look at that intersection and see what is going to be required there. Uh, whether, you know, that's what part of the traffic analysis would do, um, in phase two, not so much in, um, you know, phase, phase one being the other section, but, um, there is obviously components in how how this all comes together and ties together. Um, it's still a question and and we have to look at that. Um, I do think in this area that would be potentially extending this with the center left turn lane down, um, to Paterno, uh, that that left turn lane, as we, I think we talked about that the last time as well. So yes, there needs to be some logical termini for this section of the trail and how we, how we put that together, whether it's, you know, likely a crossing of some sort, so, um.
Stephanie, piggybacking on Kevin, if you look at that, we may be going far afield here, but one, the, um, on the upper right corner of the plan we're currently looking at, you can see one residential house beyond that green base. The next lot up is the Pico Transformer and then you can township open space and the sidewalk is almost extended along the open space from the old Cutler Development back there. I mean, if you want a natural terminus to something that will get you somewhere, that would be an expansion at some point to to land people and interconnect something.
Right.
Steph, do we, I know there's was discussion before about the right of way on the opposite side there. The right, is that still something that the township is looking to do? Okay. Um, yeah, yeah, and that and that was my reason for just having some kind of crosswalk there. I know we talked about, and there was discussion, you know, as to whether we would need a traffic light further down, but one of the big biggest reasons was for across pedestrian crossings, this could it's all bad for that, at least now.
I still think, I mean, the the section of walking truck, I've heard from a number of folks that, you know, they're concerned about the roadway, they're concerned about some of the letter rock walkability stuff, but the trail on this section, that seemed to be something, most people I talked to, it seemed to think it was a good idea.
Not going through the middle of town.
Yeah, so and it's it ain't gonna connect like something Whitaker and other places that are sort of island down there, this.
Oh, my only concern with, uh, designing and installing this, uh, trail before the road is in. I just see them, we put the trail in, then they decide to put the road right where our trail is. I mean, it's gonna have to re be rebuilt again. There's no way that's gonna survive the construction there. Because the elevations are gonna be different. I mean, you'd almost have to design the road first.
That's correct. That's what, and that's what we actually have, Dave. We actually do have very preliminary from a handful of years ago. We have an alignment, we have a profile. We have the road, technically the road profile, and and again, it's older, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at the details of it, but I see the trail, um, and 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 remember, we're talking about advancing phase one, which is the other section. This phase is being submitted for Greenways Trails, but that's gonna be another year before they make an announcement. And by the time this one gets rolling, we're hoping phase one is kind of in in the works and moving along and and we'll see what phase two trail allows us to do. Uh, but you can see on this one, we we are, we're gonna pull that trail back to the edge of the right of way to the extent possible, right, to give us as much flexibility within the right of way for the road. Uh, but we we will, we will keep that roadway in consideration when we're cutting profiles and and laying out this trail. We're not designing the trail in a vacuum without the roadway being considered. Um, and that's something we've already done preliminarily. And I I get that it's not necessarily the 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 way we would do this in a typical, typical project, but we have support for the trail and we don't, you know, I think at this point, trying to get something within there to help that trail connection is a benefit. And if we can do it, keeping in mind where the roadway is going to be in the future and looking at the needs of the roadway and what what we have to provide for, I think we can, um, I think we can make advancements. Um, yeah. Have something that is useful.
I I don't know how old the drawings are, but I don't see any detention basins for the road.
No, they're not on, no, you're correct. They're not on here, but, uh, being linear like this, I do think we have some areas, whether it's up um, in the triangle next to Whitaker Way where it tees in, like, there's gonna be some locations, we we know we have to consider that, we know that that's within the scope, um, obviously giving us as much room as possible for vegetated swales, things like that along the road, it's not going to be curved, um, you know, so I I think we we have options. Um, and again, we have not done that level of detail of design, um, you know, for this project at this point. That's what we're trying to, trying to do, um, but we're not gonna be able to, with the funding that was awarded, design the entire road with everything that needs to be done using the PennDOT process. But we will be able to do a bulk of it and get at least a portion of this some, something moving forward and and certainly if the community project award is secured, you know, for construction, that's really, we've got to have that ready to go.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is a good point, and I know, Steph, I asked a question last time, similar to that. You know, is this gonna help us down the line? And I think you said that we're more like, people might be more likely to bid that we would have the trail. But another question would be, what if we don't get the same amount of funds? For example, we had a plan that we looked at last time, and now it's not as much money as we thought, so it's altered. Could the plan, let's say hypothetically down the way for the, you know, and Dave makes a good point, we wouldn't want to have a trail where we say, well, we can't really work with this, because now we don't have as You know, and Dave makes a good point, we wouldn't want to have a trail where we say, well, we can't really work with this, because now we don't have as much money. So now to apply maybe base in our curve here, a ramp here, is this going to factor in, is that something we should consider too?
I'm not quite sure I'm following the question.
If hypothetically, we do go with this and, you know, will it be, will there be a time in the future where we're looking for bids? And I think you said having the trail might help us with some of the bids, because of some of the work already done. Is there going to be a point, let's say we don't get approved for as much money as we were figuring? You know, we say, okay, we're looking for this for, as we go to get the one thirteen relocation. If they don't have enough money, is there a way, well, they might say, hey, we have to cut corners, we'll have to move the trail here. Or move the road over a little bit here, is that a possibility? And obviously, I know there's only a certain spot you can put the road, but the littlest things that would impact the path, because I agree with Dave, I, I would hate to put this up. You know, spend the money and then have it moved again in a couple of years would be silly.
I mean, anything's possible, but I think that moving forward, understanding that the, the complete project has a road and a trail. They have to be looked at concurrently, like it's not, and it's not just the trail or just the road, it has to become, it has to be looked at together. And ultimately, this is the ultimate project, so we have to be able to fit in. And, and quite frankly, the road is gonna govern with geometry and things like that, so I have to be able to set that to be able to set the trail. And, and that's, you know, that's the intention, moving the trail portion forward would be to. Make sure that it's in a position that can accommodate the future route. I, I don't think it's, it's not gonna be, you know. Back of the napkin, super easy, but it's also not gonna be that difficult, given the topography out here and knowing the right of way that we have to work with. I mean, this alignment that we've placed right now is all very much geometrically correct, like there's not a lot of. If you notice, it does kind of sway from one side to the other of the right of way in a few locations, and that's really to make the geometry work. So I, I don't think it's impossible, I think it's doable, I think that, you know, phasing it with the trail construction as I've. I don't know which supervisor made a statement, maybe it was Chris. You know, but we do feel like there was support from all of the work done on the study that we recently did with Letterak. Like, there was support for this trail connection. And I think that that, that does. Start to address some of the, even the concerns as well as the. Recommendations that we were hearing, you know, to, to make these connections and help people get in and around the village. Being with one thirteen being a bicycle route, and giving, making, making those connections in an area of the township that does lack. Some of those features at this point.
Not to be a Debbie Downer, the road, we've been seeking funding for this road for a very, very long time. And if it's done in my lifetime, it's shocking, but we are a township that. Really does great with trails and sands the road, a trail connection through this area makes all the sense in the world. So if the road never gets built, this is a great trail connection, there are both phases of it. And I, I think that we will, I don't want to miss the, I, I want the good plan well executed rather than the perfect plan. And that, I think this is a good plan for that trail connection. And hopefully the road someday gets funded, but I think this trail will get plenty of years of use before we would see the road.
Go ahead.
So, so when we get grant funding, right, it's typically explained how that funding is gonna be used. This is an unusual circumstance where we ask for a certain amount of money, we only got a portion of that. When you receive federal funding, you are required to have logical terminology, so that's what Steph's struggling with right now, she's trying to figure out, what do we want to do? That's a logical termini that the federal government would then be supportive of and give us our. So that's, that's kind of what the position we're in right now, and then how far to carry that. So while we can, you know, debate the minutia, we, we gotta give her some kind of direction so we can, we get this thing advanced and. Hopefully get our six hundred K to do what, what ultimately is gonna be a great project, but then, in my opinion. Okay, your turn.
I was just going to add that as part of this, doing that. Tra, the traffic evaluation, which we've done and we've studied and we know essentially what needs to happen out here, but. As we've heard, you know, traffic patterns have changed, the signal has been implemented at Letterak, there's. There's a number of different things to consider, whether the intersections are signalized, whether there's a roundabout, whatever the case may be. We have to demonstrate that to satisfy Penn dot on, on that evaluation, right, basically a, that study section to determine exactly what the footprint. Of a roadway would look like out here, again. I'm recommending that that task be part of this scope so that. We can answer those questions with clarity when asked, right, what, what is the footprint of the roadway, so that you have that direction moving forward. To, to seek the additional funding. Should the road become a project, but. As far as the trail, I would agree, these are the logical termini based on what we've looked at in our discussions. Schlosser Road tying into that existing trail segment and parking area, Morris Road adding that set. Short segment on the one property to tie into the new segment, that would be part of the Letterak Village Apartments project. Those are what we would consider. Very logical termini, actually, you know, and picking up at Truman Court, and then phase two would also have a similar. Approach down the road if, you know, if and when funding would be secured for that project development, but this alone does stand. It, it will stand alone as a project that we could. And did submit to the community project program through the Senator's Office. It's in the range of the amount of dollars that those types of projects would be. So, you know, the, the goal would be that, you know, it's a, it's a. It's meeting the needs of, and it's, it's meeting the requirements of that program as well. And so, yes, that's, that's really what we're trying to do is. Take what was given and, and, and package it up in a way that still gives a viable project. And able to move something forward for, you know, additional future, future efforts as well.
If actually you're crossing out of Atlanta, I'll take advantage of that, but I think other than that, that is. See where we wanted to see it. Again, yeah, I mean, I think you, a little long, we'll try to make money, the next phase is funding in the next round. Can we get a, a copy of this one to look at too, Steph, you send that to us, well?
Um, for the, this plan or the?
Here, this, this, this one, I know it's gonna get updated more, but the one that we're looking at currently.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send, I, I think. Honestly, I can't remember if we sent the submitted packages for the community projects, but I will send those around and that has this plan. In it as well, but just so you're aware of everything that went to both Senators' Office offices. Make sure you have that as well.
We good, we got any more direction needed, Steph, or you?
No, I think we're good, what I'm gonna have to do is just. Basically, fine tune this, I mean, I know what the scope and I know the cost, but I'm gonna have to write it up in a fashion so that. D C D can approve it, and at that point, then they will move forward with the agreements. And approving the revised scope, and then you'll see something probably coming through from them for electronic signatures.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the next item on the agenda is an ambulance update. Lower Southford, Limerick and Freedom Valley Representatives are meeting. To just get updates on how things are going, we met last week. Members of the Board of Directors. Doug Hughes, Rick Mass, myself, and. Dan Kerr, the manager of Limerick Township. To give a brief update, they have an interim chief and slash director of operations, Mike Garrish, who was a previous assistant chief. Previously, the, the assistant. They are still looking to find. An executive director ultimately. Of course, I, you know. Requires a certain amount of funding level, but they did say that their staffing, in fact, is currently are online. They have three trucks, they're running one in Limerick, one in, in Lower Southford, and then they have one that will go back and forth depending on. The number of calls they're experiencing in each, each municipality. Revenues, revenues are keeping pace with expenses, they're looking to fill the last couple of positions on their board of directors. Knowing that they're trying to keep a half and half split between Lower Southford and Limerick. As far as representation. They're working to get a monthly report that will be coming out regularly. We should see at the next monthly meeting, so, for the board of supervisors, so that we should have soon. And one item of note is that Upper Southford has reached out to them to be their first hall. Ambulance for Upper Southford Township, so of course, that will obviously have, require some discussion as far as. The funding that Upper Southford is willing to, to make, to, to do that, so. You know, that's, that's something that hasn't been decided yet, but requires more discussion. The ambulance, board directors at Upper Southford Township. There was a issue a couple of weeks ago where a reporter had reached out to us regarding Freedom Valley. Folding up their operations April 1st, this was, I think, a misrepresentation. Freedom Valley is no longer representing Franconia Township, Franconia Township has signed on with. Lansdale, the M S C. And so I think that the reporter assumed, made an assumption that because that's happening, that they were. The, the reporter was reached out to and the, the situation was addressed. But as part of that, we did ask them to put together an update, and I think you all got a copy of it. That'll go in the newsletter, our newsletter, our website, will be forwarding it to local press as well. And so I think it, you know, in a nice concise way, college, where everything's at, everything's frankly, it's moving forward pretty well. They said staff is, is really happy, though they, they still need to find some additional paramedics. Though this is something that's happening throughout the. And EMS industry in perfection. And it's partly, partly, it's, it's a, it's a domino effect from nursing, the nursing issue, it's sort of nursing. A lot of paramedics are being hired by hospitals and emergency men, because they can do a lot of the same things that the nurses would do there. And whereas the hospitals can't buy nurse, they're filling those slots, they're now kind of poaching paramedics from ambulance companies, so. I think they would like to hire two more paramedics, they'd be, they'd be happy. That, that basically where they're at, things are moving forward, kind of as planned. The focus is on Limerick and Lower Southford Township as far as services. Again, and, and there are still other discussions with municipalities, but that will be kind of on an, as. First come, kind of first served basis, if they can do it, it makes sense.
Has there been any discussion with Skipback? Though I heard Dave, we were having issues over there, that we may be able to help with.
I do not believe so at this point, I know there was a big meeting with Skipback. Month or so ago, which I did attend. And frankly, I mean, it's, it's the, there's experience saying issues is everyone else, and it's, it's a funding issue. And it's a personnel issue. Currently, the way it's structured in Pennsylvania. Funding. Sources are not, are not. Place that they can count on that funding and that revenue source, I mean, they're, 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 they're basically. Required to, to look at funding from insurance and Medicare and those happen to be, and then, and then you have the issue of having the intermediary. The collection companies where they had an issue frankly, earlier in the year, it's been, it's been rectified in there, the revenues are back, there was a period where one of the. Major collection companies went down, everybody, including hospitals, were, were not seeing their revenues. In a timely fashion, that has been rectified, but, you know, there's a whole issue with the whole funding mechanism for ambulances. And it really needs to be kind of rectified at a higher level.
You know how wheel turn and upper government, so. It's, it's being worked on.
I think they, they feel comfortable where they're, they're moving, and the revenues are looking good. You know, as long as I think they keep their scope in a manageable ones, like I think they are at this point, and, you know. Other, other organizations are expanding at a rapid pace, and I don't know how they keep that up. But, you know, that's not for us to worry about at the time.
I appreciate that, it was just an update, I'm sure the taxpayers appreciate, there's just an update.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Having good updates.
Right. And just as a.
Doug Hughes, who's now the chairman.
Doug is the chairman, Rick Mass is the director, Vanis has joined, he's been very active. So at least from Lower Southford's perspective, I think we have a good representation there.
What do you call it, it's like. By, by the end of the conversation, I said, Doug, I'm just glad you're here for money for the ambulance.
So they seem to be better.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the Tetterman meeting is, is much positive than it had been in the past. Just as far as financials for Lower Southford, as, as, as of this Monday, our revenues are at forty three point two percent of budget. Versus forty point eight in twenty twenty-three, expenditures are at twenty seven point four percent of budget, which is within. Our normal scope versus twenty point four percent in twenty twenty-three, that's due mainly to the. Fairly sizable transfer now we make to the ambulance out of the general fund and the timing of a transfer to the. Quite large, and it didn't happen last year at this point in time, and it didn't happen at all last year, so. So in general, we're at a, a good spot financially as we move forward, so. Any questions on that?
One question, I noted in our budget recently, we changed mechanics, why, why did we change mechanics? Was there a drastic price difference, or did we change mechanics?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Because I know we've, we've been using locally, I just noticed.
The, what we were using, the Mavis in Shelby Square. Where we take the cars now, we were using. Why the switch? Because they're. They're pricey. I mean, if you notice, this, this style of tree has closed. Utilize. Thank you.
Very good, anything else for Mr. Jukowski? We have me today for executive session.
You can ask the chairman.